Thank you.
Okay, so welcome to this information meeting for Canada Information for Board of Education. We're going to go into our welcome, which we've already done. We'll talk a little bit about what this job entails and what our agency does. So Mendocino County Office of Education, we really, we exist to support students in Mendocino County. That's the, a really broad stroke, but it's really important work that we take very, very seriously. We do that in a variety of ways. We have various programs that we operate and then we support several district operated schools. We help make sure that the resources that schools have are allocated appropriately. So we also have a compliance piece. But really the, the focus of all the work are the students of Mendocino County. And again, we take that really, really seriously. In our county, we have 12 public school districts and we have 19 charters and private schools. Most of those are charters. We have approximately 12,000 students in our county and 1,900 of them attend private and charter schools. So all the rest are in our public schools. And we, in our county, we operate programs that start with infancy and support through adulthood and adult education programs. Our agency in particular, we have a program that is ages zero to three for young children with some special needs. And then in our adult programs, we also do some school age programs for special education and students who are incarcerated and students who are in a community school or alternative school setting. And then we have three different adult education programs that are run through our county office. And then we also support various programs in our districts ages zero to adult as well. This, I don't know how clearly you can see this, really depends on your screen, but this kind of shows the, the borders of each of our school districts. You can see at the very top, Southern Humboldt Unified, which is not one of our county districts, but part of Southern Humboldt comes into Mendocino County. And then at the very, whoops, at the very bottom, we also, we have a part of Sonoma County that's incorporated into one of our school districts. So we are a really unique county. We have a lot of diverse needs and we are geographically challenged in many ways because it takes a long time to get from one end of our county to the other. In many school districts, it takes a long time to get from one end of the school district to another. This is our current, our current board. And you can see also there's a map there that shows you all the counties in, in California. And we are part of Region One and that includes Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, Lake and Sonoma Counties. As county offices in Region One, we work collaboratively with all of those county offices. Every, even within our own region, they're very unique, but we learn a lot from each other and find ways to try to maximize our resources sometimes by collaborative work. And I want to show a short video that really does a good job of explaining the county office of education.
What exactly does a county office of education do? And how does its role differ from your local school district? Let's take a look. California's public education system consists of three levels, state, county and local. Regulations, funding and fundamental policy are established at the state level, while the day-to-day education of students is the responsibility of individual school districts at the local level. County Offices of Education, or COEs, represent another level, providing an important support system for school districts in their counties and serving as a liaison with the state. While COEs do not directly oversee or govern individual school districts, they do provide valuable support and services that are essential to local school district operations. For example, each of California's 58 county offices of education share a common function to ensure school districts in their counties are fiscally accountable and solvent. They also approve school district local control accountability plans, or LCAPs, provide professional development opportunities and assist districts with academic performance initiatives. Most COEs also directly serve their county's most vulnerable student populations, including students who have been expelled from their home district, students who are incarcerated or are on probation, homeless and foster youth, students with severe special needs and early learners through a network of state-funded preschools. A multitude of additional supports are offered by many county offices, some of which include hosting student events and competitions, student enrichment, residential outdoor education programs and much more. Each county office of education is overseen by a county superintendent of schools. In all but five counties, the superintendent is a publicly elected official who runs the COE. Each county also has an elected county board of education whose responsibilities include approving charter schools and hearing inter-district transfer and expulsion appeals. The county board also approves the COE budget and local control accountability plan, but has no authority over individual school districts. For parents and students, your local school district is the most relevant agency for policies and decisions impacting your child's education. A school district's governance team is composed of the school district administration and a locally elected board of trustees. Local school boards have broad power to approve and create budgets, hire district superintendents, develop and select curricula aligned with the state's standards and set district-level policies, including those related to facilities as well as health and safety. In California, our system is designed to have the decisions that most affect your child be made at the local level where you can have your voice heard.
So in that description of the county office, we do all of what was described there, except we do not run an outdoor education program. Jeff, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
That'd be great. For the tape, I'll just mention that I worked for the California School Boards Association as a governance educator. I've put on workshops for probably 500 separate school board members over the years. I've also worked with executive assistants to superintendent. I worked with hundreds in case anyone is interested in taking one of those workshops. I was with the Los Angeles Unified School District for 36 years. For 26 of those years, I was the executive officer of the board and I worked directly for the board members. I worked for 34 separate board members and I worked with nine superintendents during that time. So I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the, what makes a good board member. And I think it's critical that we all understand that this is such an essential component of our educational system and our governance system and local government here in California. And so anyone that wants to take this on, I admire you. It really is an important thing to do and really there are 6 million children in California dependent on us doing a good job. So let me talk about what I think are the characteristics of a good school board member. Importantly, successful board members believe, really to their core, that their mission is success for each and every student. We look at these students as individuals in a county board or a local board. You're really responsible for these students, not just their education, but really their wellbeing. And so it's important that you think of them as individuals and each and every student deserves the opportunity for really educational advancement. We don't think about just concentrating on some specific group, we think about every student. County board members especially may need to expand their world. So they're representing the entire community's diverse beliefs and values. You can see with Mendocino County, it is big. And so if you're on a local school board, you might just be representing your local community's values. But when you join onto the county board of education, it really is from tip to tail. Everybody within that county deserves this representation and you really are representing their values and what they believe in as a community. Board members become community leaders. For many, this is not an easy transition. My experience shows that board members come in thinking that they know exactly what's right and that they have some very specific viewpoint. But becoming a leader says you have to expand that also. You have to really represent all of the people within your community and you have to lead them. You are becoming a leader when you join into this government entity. And I want to mention very importantly, that the lines that divide a board member's private life and their public life start to blur. And then new board member really has to understand that. People will stop you because they've seen you on Zoom meetings or on, at community meetings or on, at the board meetings in person. And they will think they know you and they will come up and talk to you and they will tell you an issue that is burning in their mind and they want you to solve it. You, you have to give up some piece of your private life to really be a representative of the entire community. I'd like to talk about the role of the county board of ed. We just saw the video about the pieces, but I'll just start by refuting a common misconception about the role of a board member, especially as a county board member. In the video we saw, you saw that the county board member is really not the boss of any person or any local school district. By law, no board member has any authority as an individual and no county board member hires or fires anyone. You're joining a team. So county board members have to work as a team with the superintendent and they become a governance team. The mission is to engage the community so that the visions, goals and policies of the county office of education can be implemented. You've got to work together with your colleagues, your fellow board members and the superintendent to really achieve your mission and vision. You have to make student achievement a priority. There are lots of other issues that will come forward, but you get to reflect on every single one of those issues about student achievement because that really is the priority of what we're looking for representing our community. The county board members also need to create a district culture that's cooperative and supportive. Cooperative and supportive of all of the county staff, supportive of the superintendent, supportive really of all the local school districts that will be coming to you with various issues, especially regarding budgets. So I'll talk about some of the responsibilities of a county board that are not just, you have to do this. County boards and board members need to operate transparently. You'll have public meetings and discussions and decisions you will make and they need to take place in public. There are few limited exceptions for which you will have to trust your superintendent and lawyers about what can take place out of the view of the public. But they're really just exceptions. Almost everything else will be taking place in public and that's another hard transition for many. We're used to just having these kind of private discussions and we'll solve this. If we could just get together over a cup of coffee. That is not allowed in California. There are the open meeting laws which say, we have to do the public's business in public. You'll be adopting courses of study for county office of education programs, including for which the schools the county operates, community day schools, rock rope programs. They're just a small set maybe in the big scheme of things. But courses of study will be important, they'll come forward on, to the county board. The county board will approve the local accountability plans of the local school districts and of any schools run by the county. And that's a, a recent quirk, well, quirk isn't fair. It's, it's a development in California about how we have to ensure that the budget is being spent on priorities related to achievement. The plans are about 200 pages. And if you're looking at each of them for each of the school districts, there'll be, there's a template. They're very similar, but it's responsibility to look at them. You'll be taking action on student appeals for discipline issues and inter-district transfers. And there'll be some contact with community members, parents, school district officials that are going to depend upon you making good informed decisions. County board members take action on county charter school petitions and any appeals to charter petitions rejected or limited by action of a local school board. There may not be very many of them in Mendocino, but you need to be prepared, you need to be guided through the process because in our litigious world, it's often the next action that takes place after the county makes the decision. Someone says, we'll see you in court. So you have to really depend on guidance to be making a good decision in this. So you can really be a shepherd of the county processes. Most importantly, you'll need to adopt policies to ensure safe and appropriate education environment is provided for all students, all the students that are within the county system. But really you'll be looking at a lot of budgets and local control accountability plans that have pieces of student safety. And really, every parent guardian has that on their mind. And so it's a, it's an issue that will be presented to you over and over. I'd like to mention that two really essential components that I have found are necessary for a board member. Board members need to have trust. They need to really focus on trust of the staff and of your colleagues. And for a board member to be successful, you have to be able to assume from the very start that everyone on the board and everyone on the county staff and at every local school district has the best interest of children at heart. And you need to continue to believe that until you're proven wrong. That's a factor that will let you operate from the very beginning, from the very start of your tenure on the board. Manner counts, I'd like to mention that also. You're going to be very public, people are going to be watching, people are going to be coming to board meetings and they're going to make sure that you're modeling for every student from kindergarten all the way through the rock rope program, high school programs, that you are holding yourself accountable in the same way a teacher would hold the student accountable. So you, how you appear, how you talk to others, how you speak to staff is so critically important. The worst possible thing is having a board meeting turn into some sort of circus-like endeavor, some atmosphere where the public doesn't have confidence that you're really taking care of business. As piece of trust, you're going to have to create partnerships with those with whom you will disagree. Maybe on one specific issue, maybe on every issue, but you're going to have to create a partnership because this governance team, the board members and the superintendent need to work together. And there will be disagreements. You won't agree on what to do first or what to do next or the continuum of issues. And so you'll really have to assume this partnership. Even though you disagree and there will be those times where it will come down to a vote. This isn't just a consensus operation. The laws require a vote and so there will be things that are decided, three votes to two. And then you'll have to get to the next item on the agenda. And if you're not able to work collaboratively, even when you disagree, it will not just create an impasse. It'll create a situation where the community won't trust you to make a good decision. So it's really critical. The last thing I'll mention about trust is that an essential component of the job is to maintain confidentiality. You will learn things in the role of, as a board member, that need to remain confidential. Those are student information, parent information, teacher information, school information, contractual information. You might be entering in a contract, having to approve it and it will be just a business thing. But before it happens, you have to maintain the confidentiality because you can imagine a situation, contractual situation where if it leaked out, you were going to prove something, let's just think of buying property at a certain value. If that information would reach the other party before the contract was agreed upon, it might endanger the, the deal entirely or the school, the board may be paying more than they need to, to maintain that fiduciary trust in the, by the community. So confidentiality is essential in all aspects, especially about student information. And you can't be casual about it, it's really critical. Confidentiality about discussions with your colleagues or with the superintendent is also critical because that's what builds trust. Trust is earned, you know, teaspoon by teaspoon filling a bucket, but the bucket can be knocked over in any single instance and a violation of confidentiality is the easiest way for that to happen. Another important attribute of board members, something I believe is important, is a board member, a board member needs to be receptive to change. And if you're thinking about joining a school board, you really have to ask yourself, am I the type of person willing to change my mind? If you are a person who is too stubborn to think that someone else has a better argument or a better idea, it's probably not best to join a school board because you will butt heads with the other stubborn person and you might have two people with two great ideas, but you can't come to some common concurrence about what to do. And that's just as bad as doing nothing. You have to be a person that's willing to listen, to understand. People will come to you and say things that you really need to listen to. And this is another component of building trust. If people don't believe you're listening to them, you're not going to earn their trust. I believe a good attribute of a school board member is a person who's willing to ask for help. A person that really gives the impression that they don't know everything, but they're willing to ask questions. They're willing to say, I need help with this. Or if the two of us join together, maybe we can accomplish this. Even best if the five of us and the superintendent really join together on an initiative, we can achieve it. And that's critical for students. I think also you have to recognize that a school board member needs to be willing to change how you conduct your business and social life, your personal and private life. As I said, you're going to have people coming up to you in the grocery store and they're going to blur the lines. That's also true with confidentiality. You know, just because you're at a, a party doesn't mean that you can share information that you gleaned as confidential information in your role as a board member. And you really have to be conscious of that all the time. And you always have to be asking yourself, should I say something or should I really think about it first and see how this would create a conflict? At the CSBA, we really think of this as the transition from I to we. You're an individual when you start on the school board, but then you become part of this team. But an essential part of that also is no one is asking you to give up on what you believe. No one's saying you can't have that value. It's the exercise of what you're doing that allows you to still be yourself and bring something to the table that will add. But you're a we now, it's not just about you as an individual, it's about you as a member of this governance team. Really, again, joining a school board is something to be admired by our system, which is about 200 years old. The local school boards are an incredibly important component. Everything builds from there. The job that we do on things like democracy and education and, and what we hope our children will learn and what they will graduate knowing depends on local school boards. And it depends on those people that volunteer to take this on. Because it doesn't come without a cost. There's time that you have to dedicate to this, there's just a lot of reading, I have found, things to concentrate on. It's one of those jobs that is like a teacher where the first year really is hard because you're starting anew. And then you build on your skills and it gets easier and easier. And then you'll be a person that can really add value to the school board itself and help the new people that come forward to accomplish what you need to accomplish as a school board to really serve kids. So I applaud everyone who volunteers to take this on, to do this job, which is essential. So love to answer questions, but...
Thank you so much, Jefferson.
If Derek would raise his hand, I'd answer.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to keep trucking. And Derek, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Jeff, you mentioned a lot of reading material. I'm curious, what kind of, I mean, I honestly don't know that much about this position. So I'm, I'm just trying to gather information about what, what really is involved.
So that's a, such an important question because, as I said, I've probably met four or 500 board members in the last few years. And I try to ask in all my workshops, the question of what really surprised you when you started the job? And routinely, regularly, always, people say, I didn't really understand how much reading would be involved. And so I'll say that succinctly. At a county board of ed, there really is less. There are less schools that you're involved with, less students that you're involved with, less contractual decision-making. But there's still, you have to be prepared for board meetings. That enters into the trust issue again. If your colleagues are all prepared and you just show up and you don't know what's happening, it's like a violation of their trust. So you have to be prepared for meetings. And in Mendocino, I understand the meetings are once a month, basically, starting at 10 a.m. And, but to prepare for them will probably take, you know, as long as, at least as long as the meeting takes, a couple of hours so that you will go through. And as I said, it gets easier. Once you've seen one local accountability plan, local control accountability plan, LCAP, they're all the same, basically. You know, they follow the same formats, so it gets easier as you go. But that first one you see, you'll want to look at. They'll be asking you to approve it. They're asking you to look at budgets. And so you'll want to know what's there before you're in a meeting and someone says, can we improve these in a group? Does anyone have an objection to approving all 12 that are before us right now? And it can go really quickly, but you'll want to be prepared. So your superintendent, Nicole, will have a much better idea about how many hours of work she thinks it's during a month. But the meetings themselves are, you know, a component, but the preparation you'll want to do is also a component.
We have a very, our, our, our current board is very diligent about reading our entire agenda and the attachments. Larry, about how much time would you estimate you spend each month for board meetings at Cary?
Honestly, it would depend on the agenda and what's on it. I read all 700 pages of the budget. Seriously, I would say probably I put in four or five.
A month?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that may be more or less depending on if there's issues, but it is... it is consistently at least that that I either do or must do or should have done, in all honesty.
Thanks, you guys. Any other questions at this time? Uh, will, how about we move on to Katrina, can you tell us the process for becoming a candidate?
Yeah, we, um, so the candidate filing period begins on July 15th and ends August 9th. If one of the incumbents fails to file, that particular seat that the incumbent has would be extended an additional five calendar days, so until the following Wednesday. So if you want to run, I would suggest that you come and get information and talk to us, and then we can give you the application and some of the forms to fill out. But everything, the actual declaration of candidacy has to be filed in our county. Um, so it goes on from there to where, um, you know, we have you fill out different, we give you a information packet and Nicole, I've emailed them to her, so she can share those. Um, it's good to read about it, it tells you about the, the declaration of candidacy, the campaign disclosures, and that's a disclosure that the state of California um, requests, and either you fill out a 470, which you plan on spending less, or, or collecting less than $2,000, or 460, if you're going to have a full blown out campaign, like both Nicole and I have had in the past, then you have to um, itemize your, your expenditure, to itemize your money coming in, and where that, you know, where everything went, and that's to make sure that everything is nice and fair and above board. Um, there's contribute, there may be contribution limits, we do have them through this year, I believe, and we can give you that information, and that means that one particular donor cannot contribute over a certain amount of money. Um, before years ago, we never had that. This is a requirement of the state, that if our local board of supervisors hadn't approved a, um, a spending limit, then the state one takes over. We have a provision of fair campaign that goes through, you know, basically, you know, you campaign on your own attributes, you don't disparage your, you know, the people that are running. Also, you know, they're not necessarily running against you, they want the job as well, so um, they deserve respect as much as you deserve respect. Um, we have um, how to, um, how, if you do a candidate statement, which is what comes out in the sample ballot, that tells your basic bio and your experience, we have um, guidelines on that. Um, we have a particular form we like that on. Um, deposits, if you want to put a candidate statement in the sample ballot. Um, we just go over the, the different basics of there. There's a lot of forms that need to be filled out, so, you know, don't think that it's going to be 10 minutes, it'll probably be closer to an hour. Maybe more, depending on, um, you know, your questions and everything else, but you know, this is to rest assured that our voters, and it's funny what Jefferson said, you know, about confidentiality and about trust and your and about change, it can change any minute, you're describing an election official right there. So, um, you know, we do have integrity, we expect integrity during an election, and although we're not, you know, the police of that. If you do something a little odd, don't doubt that your opponents will turn you in for it. But you know, it's, I think it's a good experience. I grew up in a political family, and um, I always knew that in. So then I started working in the elections department 2004, and it's amazing. And whether you run or not, if you want to come and observe our procedures and see what we do during the election, it's amazing, you know, you will be, you will go away trusting the system like you've never, you know, you may have had questions about it and thought, oh yeah, they know what they're doing, but you will go away knowing what, what happens. So we encourage you, whether or not it's for um, the BOE, the, the Board of Education, or for school district, it's a great way to have community involvement. Thank you.
Um, Nicole, would you mind if I add that it's from what Katrina's saying, also add to that, that attending a board meeting would be really important homework to prepare for being on the board. Um, looking at the agenda, looking at the, uh, watching the meeting on video. Really, it should be a requirement. So you get, you can really make an informed decision about whether you want to join the group. Um, it's easy to do now, especially with the uh, you know, cable and videos and Zoom and YouTube. Um, and the internet where you can just download the agenda whenever you want and look at it and have it in front of you uh, while you're watching a board meeting. It can be really uh, enlightening, and you can see really the work that's done by the school board.
Uh, that's a great point, thank you for bringing that up. Most of our um, board meetings are on YouTube um, and can be, can be found, and you can um, you can go back a, a, a few years at least. Um, the, the ones, we, we, we recently had a, a meeting, actually just yesterday, that one was um, a very short meeting, and we held it um, off location on a, on a school district site. That one's not online, but by and large, all of our regular board meetings are, are, are available online for the last several years. So we've gone over, um, I think all these things, finally detailed, some time commitment, um, and some of the rewards. Um, wanted to ask, um, Larry, what have you found to be rewarding about being a county board of education member?
While I was listening to Jefferson, I'm sitting there thinking all of these qualities that he's bringing up and so forth, and most of them are the kinds of things that I believe you feel if you take your role seriously and come to with the idea that there would be not just you, because you yourself can do nothing. But you must be part of this and take those actions only a certain times. I, I'm happy that I see Jefferson, because I wasn't exactly sure what to say, but when he went through things, there are a few things that I, I'd just like to add, that, that I hope Derek would, if that's alright.
Sure.
Uh, that Derek might understand. The role that this board, my board, our board, plays with our superintendent is called shared governance. And is the result of about 120 to 150 years of haphazard legislation. If, and, and I don't mean that disparaging way, it's come around to that not all of the 58 counties in California uh, elect their superintendent, but I think all but three. And that is a role then that says, okay, what does the county office do? Technically, it's called the intermediate unit between the State Department of Education and the local school district. And it serves a vital role. The role of providing services for the little schools, the large schools, and all in between, and primarily, we are small schools, that are not possible for a school site itself or school district to do. And that overarching support, along with instructions and, and literally supervision to see that they're fiscally sound and that they also are meeting the educational roles that they're responsible to do. Uh, that's probably, uh, and my, my remark about haphazard legislation is, if you look into the history of it, and I can see Jefferson smiling, uh, it, it does have an interesting, um, an, an interesting history. Our board is five members like most, and our boundaries, if you are, area 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 coincide with supervisory districts. Now, they are moved a little bit every 10 years, but essentially they're set up to be about the same population for each of the supervisors to manage and for us as board members. And that in itself means that some of our board members, area 3, for example, and that is a, a that is a a seat that is expiring this year, and area 2, the, excuse me, not area 2, area 4, I believe it is, over on the coast, uh, out of Fort Bragg, both of those terms are open. Typically, there would be two often two members up for election every four years, or three. Depending on the possibility of appointments, that could vary, but by and large, this time there are two, and next time there are, there would be three in two more years. Uh, and the person is required to live within the area that they seek, for example, if you wanted to be a board member from area 3, you would need to live in the area of Latinsville, Willops, up toward, um, up toward Round Valley, that portion of it. But it's a matter of you've got to live there, and you have to be a part of it. The other thing that, and I would say, Jefferson said so many good things about the things that we would do and would not do, or should be careful of. But one of them is, I think, respect for your office and for the staff that the superintendent not only manages but depends on. So if you have something that you want to talk to a staff member about, you don't go talk to that staff member. You talk to the superintendent, and if it's the necessary thing where you could set up an appointment, or perhaps she would simply say, oh yeah, go ahead, I understand your question. But don't free your legs, and that, that is as important as anything. The other one is, we all have, I don't know if anybody used the word since we started, but all of us operate under California's open meeting laws, it's called the Brown Act. And that's one that you not only need to study, but you need to respect. Two of us as board members could talk about something, and we can even express our opinions related to things that would be involved with the school board business. But we can't then go talk to somebody else, just two of us, and say, well, you know, this person feels that way, and you begin to build a a voting block, if you will, that is entirely illegal. Uh, also, we do not hold public meetings. We hold, we, we have meetings that are held in public. And there's a vast difference, we have an agenda which has an open space for public comment, but our agenda will be followed, and the person who may be interested in speaking has legitimate opportunity and legitimate time. A couple of things that we are distinctly responsible for are appeals that might come from a school district. Say they are a small school district and they expelled a student. And that student's expulsion has resulted in community feeling, uh, family feeling, of course, and denials, et cetera. Well, the school or the person or the family expelled has the right to an appeal, and that appeal comes to the board at the county level. And from that, there is no appeal. So the important part of that is that's done with discretion, and it's done with skill. There are so many other things about it, but I, about the role. And yes, I, I could make jokes about reading the $28 million budget that we approved yesterday, and yes, I do not read everything. But I believe that part of our awareness is to, of, of reading, of reading your agenda, which Derek shows up legally 72 hours before the meeting. Our meetings are on Monday, so you'll have a weekend, but you all, will only have 72 hours to look at what you're going to need to perhaps act, act on, on, on that, on that Monday. It is, uh, it is a group of people here, our current board gets along very well. And in fact, I went for a hike with John Cruiser yesterday with his wife, and the four of us spent an afternoon tromping around on the beach. Uh, but we did not discuss school business. And we wouldn't, and although we could as two, the five of us could all sit down at a Christmas party, and even if we drank, but the ethics involved is, you would not mention anything related to school. And so when Jefferson talked about confidentiality and so forth, it's a role that you will learn, but most of it goes strictly back to I am only one person as a member of a board of five, and without them, I can't do anything. So someone speaks to me and say, I have a problem at a school. Well, I would notify the superintendent here, but I'd also tell them that's not the role of a county board member. We don't enter into the discussion, even to approve or disapprove or say I'm sorry. It's just simply not our role, because that problem may become our role, and we wouldn't know it. I'm taking your time, but Derek, and deeply appreciate your interest and look forward to it.
There's one other thing that I wanted to um, address before we wrap up here, and that is compensation. A board member, there is um, small compensation to um, to county board of education members, and that is, there is a small stipend, a few hundred dollars a month. Um, and there are health benefits. Um, the same health benefits that our employees get, and the, and the stipend can be paid to the board member, or it can be um, contribute, it, it can contribute to the board member's um, contribution to the health benefits. Um, and if, if this is something that you'd like to, to get more information about, we can get you information from our um, health benefits administrator, uh, but there's also mileage paid, and we've talked a lot, and it can sound like a lot, and it is, because it's really important work. Um, the compensation, the benefits that, that a board member gets, if you were to spread that out over the hours that they spend reading, it's really, it's, it really can't be called compensation. It is more like recognition for the work. This, it is a challenging, it's challenging work, working in education, no matter what role you play, or no matter when you have worked in education, it is always challenging and super important and very rewarding. Um, and to help new board members, there is a lot of support through CSBA and through our agency to make sure that a new board member um, is onboarded in a similar fashion that they would be, um, say, in a, taking a new position, so that they understand what their role is, they meet the people. Um, and, and that's not all done at once, we do it over a period of time, so that the person can kind of get acclimated to the work and, and, and take on the information in bits and pieces, so that it is something that can be um, understood and digested, so to speak, over time, so. This is really important work. Mendocino County is an amazing place, um, and we have really amazing school districts doing some really hard work. Um, and I think one of the favorite, my favorite things about our board meetings is when we have presentations from staff about the work that's being done. Um, yesterday, we held a board, um, our board meeting at Mendocino High School, and the high school principal gave us a tour of some of the new facilities that they have um, been working on for a couple of years now. And I tell you what, uh, we hear a lot about education, um, on the news that can make you feel quite down and out about the, the state of our nation, about the state of education, but when you get in and start really looking at the work, it is awe inspiring, and it will, it is, this is a feel-good job, we, there's, there, there, there are moments that are not so feel-good. But when you look at the, at the work overall, um, it's really good to do work that you know is contributing to making our county a better place, and I encourage you, Derek, to really consider this, and if you know of other people that might be interested, spread the word, share the information, and we are happy to answer questions about this now or in the future. We work with some cool kids, this is a picture of um, kids getting really excited about the medals that they won at the science fair that we do annually. Uh, science and um, technology, engineering, arts, and math.
STEAM.
STEAM, yes. Um, so this, that's one of the events that we do that, that we're really proud of. And if you have any questions about this, Veronica is here in this meeting, but her information is up there on the screen. Um, and you can contact her through email or by phone. Um, and you can contact her through email or by phone and she's happy to answer questions. And uh, one more time, Derek, do you have any questions or comments at this time before we wrap up?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could follow up with Veronica, but I was curious, just a couple logistical questions. When is the election? When does the term start? And when are uh, what are the, what are the general meeting hours? It sounds like Mondays at ten. Is that what it is? One Monday per month at ten?
Second Monday of every month.
Yes, second Monday of the month. Occasionally, there's a special meeting, but not normally.
And that lasts for a couple hours and it can be at a different part, any different part of the county? It sounds like you were in town.
Yeah, they're generally held here in our main um, campus, but we do try to a couple of times a year go to a school district so that we can get a feel for the work that's being done in our county. So I think this year we've done including August, we'll, we will have had three different board meetings that were in different locations, but most of them are here. And but the timeline, Veronica, can you address that?
Yeah, so um, probably the most crucial thing is to really connect with Katrina because if you get that paperwork in on time with her office, then you're eligible to um, to be on, for to be uh, you know, elected. Um, so the election is in November and then we have an organizational meeting in December where you will take the oath or the new person will take the oath at that time. And then the terms uh, is a four year term.
Starting in November or January, January, I guess, or December?
December of twenty twenty four, correct?
Okay. And then Veronica, would you be the one to send more information about just the compensation package than the health insurance?
Yeah, I can actually, I have your emails. So what I could do is um, I can send you the packet that Katrina is offering. Um, I can send you also a one pager where it shows the, you know, major deadlines. Um, so you stay on top of that and then also I'll connect you with um, with our people for the compensation.
Perfect.
And Derek, this is Katrina. Um, if you, so because it's by supervisory race, if you and one other person file, then it goes to the ballot. Normally, if you're the only one that files, you would be appointed in lieu of election and that is totally up to um, the superintendent of, of public instruction if they wanna hold an election or not. But normally, that's the way um, most of our small districts, including the board of education um, are.
For what it's worth, elections cost money.
They do.
And, and that's probably the reason that uh, if there were no, if there was no competition, if there is no contest, then it wouldn't be held. I, I might say too that people like the folks on the county board, uh, many of them have been in schools and that was my career and I have to say, that's the reason that I still look forward to it and still feel that I can make a contribution. Cause there is nothing more important in this world than our children. And that is one of the ways that you can serve. Nobody will probably give you applause, but if you make a difference, you'll know it and you'll feel good going to speak.
Well, that sounds like a great way to end this meeting. Thank you, Larry. Thank you all for being here and Derek, thank you for considering uh, being part of the board of education.
Thank you, guys.
Everybody have a good evening. It was great meeting you all.